Good evening, and I'd like to call this meeting of the Cano Open Space Conservation Agency to order. If you could join me with a flag salute. Hand over your heart, repeat after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Could we have the roll call, please?
Director Engler?
Here.
Director Nichols?
Yes.
Director Sullivan?
Here.
Vice Chair Newman?
Here.
Chair Huffer.
Yes. Thank you very much. Item three, presentations and announcements. Ooh, our new park superintendent. Are you going to take this, Mr. Friedel?
Yes, thank you Chair Huffer and members of the board. It's my pleasure to introduce to you, the COSCA Board, the new park superintendent, and therefore, the guy who helps run the COSCA Rangers on the CRPD side of COSCA, Patrick Belovic. He started off on the Brentwood Country Club, then the Hacienda Gold Club in La Habra Heights, then Sea Cliff Country Club as he's moving up the ranks. Then he spent a bunch of years at the Wood Ranch Golf Club as the assistant superintendent, and then Saticoy Golf Club right here in Ventura County as the superintendent. So he knows how to grow grass. He's really good at that. Yeah, I thought people were all funnier in my head. He's been with the Cano Wreckin Park District since September 2015 as a ground supervisor, and he really upped the condition of the parks and our turf maintenance processes. His knowledge is spread throughout the organization, and he's contributed with a teamwork mentality. He's been involved in our capital improvement projects, community grant project oversight, staff training, recruitment, and he's got training in college as well, Poly Pomona, a degree in ornamental horticulture and a concentration in turf grass management. And then he's a qualified pest control applicator, playground safety inspector, and he's got the PCE 832 Peace Officer Training. So he was the right guy to become the new Matt Kuba. And he'll do things differently. For instance, he actually looks, you know...
No offense.
I actually saw Matt today after three weeks in the desert. I saw him today. He was pretty funny. Anyway, Patrick is going to make an excellent addition to the CRPD team. I know he's going to do a great job with COSCA. He's now in charge of grounds for CRPD, building maintenance, the fleet, and the COSCA Rangers. So his oversight is huge, which means he knows how to fix problems and he thinks of great solutions. He'll be a great addition to the COSCA team. So Patrick Belovic, welcome. That was it?
That's it.
Yeah, and he'll get a chance to speak tonight.
Okay, moving along, we have item four on the agenda, public comments. I don't have any cards. We have no one online, so we'll move right to item five, consent calendar, approval of minutes of February 19th, 2025. I'm trying to recall if this requires board action or is it just informational?
This is a board action.
Okay. In that case, I will entertain a motion. Director Newman?
I move the minutes of February 19th.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Motion to second. Any discussion or questions? If not, all in favor? I'm sorry, I'm using my CRPD hat rather than my city hat. We need a roll call in this, correct?
You can do minutes without a roll call.
Oh, excellent. In that case, all in favor?
I just need to abstain, I wasn't here.
Oh, okay.
So I can't verify that the minutes are correct.
Okay. So all in favor with one abstention? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? One abstention. Thank you very much. Item six, six A. 2025 Cano Open Space Trails Action Committee Appointments. Who is handling this?
Good evening Chair Huffer and members of the board. I'll be sharing information about the 2025 nominations for the Cano Open Space Trails Action Committee with you this evening, and I have a brief PowerPoint. So for this year's COSTAC recruitment process, there were four scheduled vacancies to fill. The recruitment period opened on February 25th when the city clerk's department posted the customary vacancy notice and issued an accompanying press release. Recruitment information was also posted on city and COSCA social media platforms and published in the city's City Scene newsletter. Staff received 10 applications during the 30-day period, and three applications were from incumbent COSTAC members and seven were from new applicants. Ultimately, the interview committee interviewed nine applicants, as one applicant withdrew their application. And once interviews were completed, the results were forwarded to the nomination subcommittee for selection of nominees. For members, the nomination subcommittee recommends reappointing incumbents Doug Baker, Susan Bockus, and Kiera Krukowski, and appointing Monique Baker. And a few details about each are that Doug participates in COSCA's annual trail workdays as well as trailhead outreach events and looks forward to participating in Trails Education Days in the future. Susan coordinates the hike leader signups for Trails Education Days and participates in the Trail Watch program and trailhead outreach events. Kiera assists with COSCA's annual trail workdays and also participates in Trail Watch and trailhead outreach events. Monique looks forward to assisting with the annual Trails Education Days event, helping to facilitate the activities and goals of other COSCA volunteer programs, and giving back to the community through her participation with COSTAC. With regard to alternates, the nomination subcommittee recommends Ryan Letty, Jessica Minucci, and Rachel Whites. A few details about each of these folks are: Ryan has an affinity for California native plant species, has participated in trail workdays, and looks forward to helping with resource stewardship. Jessica is a current COSAF board member, a participant in the Adopt a Trail program, and looks forward to assisting with trail workday events. And last but not least, Rachel is interested in participating in Trails Education Days, contributing to the stewardship of COSCA open space, and sharing its benefits with others. And with that, staff recommends that the board find that this action is not a project under SEQA and approve the COSTAC members and alternates as recommended by the nomination subcommittee. Thank you, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you very much, Ms. Huber. Any questions? Yes, Director Nichols?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I know we've had this discussion in the past, but over the years, we've dwindled with the equestrian representation in this committee, which I think is just a reflection of the general population in our community. But does the Action Committee try to reach out to the equestrian community in some capacity when they're actually either trying to get people on this group or with action items? Or is it just not an interest anymore?
Well, it seems like it's not an interest, and so when the recruitment period opens, we try to share that information across a number of different outlets. And so this year, I listed the ones that we did. In the past, I have personally contacted ETI Corral 37, have chatted with folks at the Rancho Potrero Equestrian Center. And I think with regard to potential, or trying to recruit potential equestrians, I think that those are the two primary groups to speak with in town. And it's unfortunate, but we've never had a result coming from that outreach. And I know that various equestrian folks do follow us on social media, and this year it was nice because the Acorn actually did publish the press release. And so we feel like the information is getting out there, but people have busy schedules, and as you correctly observed, it does seem like the equestrian community or population in town is dwindling a bit from what it was in decades past. So it would be nice to have equestrian representation on the committee, but I don't know, I could make it, there's a pun that I'm thinking of. It's appropriate.
Well, I was just going to say, as long as there's not clamoring for participation that's not being addressed, nor is there concern that the group is not addressing the needs of that community. If they're just not either willing to participate or voice their concerns, then I guess we don't need to worry about it. I guess that's my point.
Well, we would welcome clamoring. Certainly, if there was clamoring, I think it's fair to say that we would be aware of that. I'm not sure what else we can do to encourage submittal of an application.
Well, I guess the equestrians are happy with the trails as they are, so we'll just be satisfied with that, I guess. Thank you. That was all I had, quasi-related, but thank you very much.
And certainly, what we can also do is if we're made aware of equestrians who aren't satisfied with trail conditions, then during that conversation, we can certainly share or encourage them to, you know, please apply for the committee the next time the recruitment period opens up also.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Yes, Ms. Sullivan?
My question was also going to be, were there any equestrians that applied? But I will say that at our annual trail workday, when they sign the waiver, volunteers check the boxes, are they a hiker, a mountain biker, equestrian, open space admirer? And we do get equestrian folks that do come out and volunteer. So hopefully, we can continue to grow that and maybe get them to step up for a committee.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have questions or comments? If not, we have two staff recommendations. I'll entertain a motion on these. Yes?
Yeah, I'll move staff recommendation.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second. Now should I ask for a roll call?
Yes. Director Engler?
Yes.
Director Newman?
Aye.
Director Nichols?
Yes.
Director Sullivan?
Aye.
Chair Huffer?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you very much. Item six B, authorization to accept three open space parcels from the city of Thousand Oaks. Mr. Stark, are you taking this?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. The item before you here tonight is authorization to accept three open space parcels totaling 7.14 acres in size from the city of Thousand Oaks. COSCA regularly acquires new property for open space and furtherance of our mission to implement the city's general plan and COSCA's strategic plan. When property is purchased, several funding sources are available. One of these is called the Community Recreation Facilities and Open Space Acquisition and Maintenance Endowment Fund. That's quite an acronym, so we affectionately call it CROSF. When these funds are used, and these are appropriated by the city council. So when we use these funds, initially, the title for the property will go into the city's name and held for subsequent transfer to COSCA. I do have some slides to accompany the next part of our presentation. So three recently purchased properties have been approved by the city for transfer to COSCA. These include three quarters of an acre in the Skyline Open Space. We have 4.46 acres in the McCray Open Space, and 1.93 acres in the Royal Cano Open Space. You can kind of see my red dots there on the map, so kind of spread out. But these proposed properties for transfer all contain land with conservation value and are free of known title defects, and they don't contain other infrastructure or defects that we feel would compromise any of the conservation values. Transfer of these properties implements goals and policies found in the Thousand Oaks general plan and the COSCA strategic plan as those are outlined in the staff report that you received. I'll kind of walk you through the closer-up pictures of these. This is the three quarters of an acre that we have up. This is on the top of, what's this one called? Cano?
Cano Ridge.
Cano Ridge. So it's above the skyline area, and so it lies just on top of a bunch of other properties that COSCA already owns. This is the acres, four plus acres out along North Moore Park Road, and this is in the McCray Open Space. And this is also directly adjacent to existing COSCA property. And this is kind of the last piece of property in this particular area that's available that we... And this is kind of the last piece of property in this particular area that's available that we don't already own. And then here is a property we purchased, uh, in two thousand twenty-three. That's right, um, along, uh, Hillcrest Drive, and that's Arroyo Conejo Open Space. So the properties to be transferred, which consist of seven point one four acres, these are already managed by COSCA and the COSCA Society with management of the property are already included in COSCA's annual budget. Staff has determined that there is sufficient support for finding the transfer uh, to COSCA to be exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to CEQA guidelines, fourteen CCR sections, one five zero six one, one five three one six, and one five three two five. Specifically, the transfer to COSCA will preserve open space in its natural condition, providing habitat for wildlife and native flora consistent with COSCA's mission and management plans. Staff recommends that the board find this action is categorically exempt under the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to California Code of Regulations Title fourteen, Sections one zero, one five zero six one, one five three zero four, and one five three one seven. And adopt, uh, a resolution accepting the transfer of these three properties, uh, from the city of Thousand Oaks and for COSCA, for COSCA management's open space and authorize the chief administrative officer to execute any and all documents necessary to accept the, the properties and authorize the staff to record the accepted transfer deeds. With that, I am available for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Stark. Do we have questions of staff? Yes, Director Sullivan.
Um, of the three properties, it looks like the only one that may include some sort of trail access would be the Arroyo, but is that?
That, that would be accurate. Um, there's, the Trail Master Plan has a pers- perspective trail illustrated in that area. And so it's such, if, you know, we have the option in the future to connect that. But right now, that's a big project.
There's a lot of other stuff going on in there. I understand that.
But there's certainly a possibility there. Um, up on Skyline, you know, that's mostly just an open space area for wildlife. And the area up on North Moore Park, that's also just mostly wildlife habitat. But it's also an important scenic gateway into, into Thousand Oaks, and so it kind of represents, uh, you know, you're welcome to Thousand Oaks. Here's our open space.
Any other questions? Yes, Director Newman.
Thank you, Chair. Do any of these parcels carry with them any additional responsibility for fire abatement or trash removal?
So the, the one on North Moore Park has, um, power lines that run over the top of it. Historically, Southern California has and did, used to do that, but in more recent years they have not. And they have indicated that they do not intend to do so. So we'll be adding that to COSCA's, uh, weed management pro- program.
Thank you.
Any other questions? No, I just, one, one question, um, Mr. Stark, the, I know for a number of years, uh, you're going through the historic documents in the city and catching up with, with properties that had been intended for COSCA, but for whatever reason hadn't gotten there. But it looks like all three of these properties, uh, were, were pretty much contemporaneous between our last meeting and this meeting. So are we pretty well caught up with the process of, of these, um, floating properties, or however you'd want to refer to them as?
Yes, we've done a lot of work over the last, uh, four years to do a lot of the transfers. So that's why we're batching them like this now. So with the approval of these, we should all be caught up. Um, the, it doesn't mean we won't consider looking at some other city properties. There are still a few out there that have some lingering issues for us to work out in terms of the long-term management needs. Um, just to make sure that during, you know, before the transfer, that we assure the city is getting what they need um, out of that, that property, you know? So some of this is still in a negotiation, but it's, um, so yeah, you'll, you may see some more in the future, but not a lot of them.
Okay. Thank you very much. If there are no further questions or comments, we have two staff recommendations for which I'll entertain a motion. Director Engler?
Be born happy to move staff recommendation.
Thank you. Somebody?
I'll second that.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Um, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Director Engler?
Yes.
Director Newman?
Aye.
Director Nichols?
Yes.
Director Sullivan?
Aye.
Chair Huffer?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you very much. Item six C. I can find it here. I know it's on here. Oh, there we are. Um, six C, contract approval for Arroyo Conejo Trash Removal Phase Two. Is this yours again, Mr. Stark?
It is. So this, this is a, a request for the board to approve a contract with Woods Maintenance Services to implement the Arroyo Conejo Trash Removal Project Phase Two. The board will recall that in two thousand twenty-four, COSCA released an RFP, or Request for Proposals, for the removal of trash from an approximately eighty foot wide corridor along two thousand linear feet of Arroyo Conejo Creek. The contractor was retained through that process and completed the cleanup project in July of two thousand twenty-four. In total, approximately thirteen point four tons of trash were removed at a cost of eighty-seven thousand and four hundred dollars. Based on the success of the first phase, uh, COSCA, in partnership with the city of Thousand Oaks, is initiating a second phase of the project. On March twenty-first, twenty twenty-five, COSCA released a public request for proposals through the city's procurement portal, seeking qualified bidders to undertake the project tasks. A mandatory job walk was conducted on April first, twenty twenty-five, and was attended by six prospective bidders. Four proposals were received, uh, by the submitted deadline on April eighteenth. Proposals were then reviewed and ranked by a committee that included staff from COSCA, the city, and the Conejo Recreation and Park District. In addition to proposed costs, the committee considered proposal clarity, project approach, the economy of the approach, and realistic estimates of the level of resources needed to complete the job in the proposed timeframe. Based on the, on the proposal reviews and bid prices, COSCA staff recommends that Woods Maintenance Services uh, be awarded the contract. The choice of contractor was based on the contractor's experience working in similar environments and on a similar scale, the clarity and completeness of the proposal, the most realistic assessment of the necessary resource commitment and schedule, as well as their price. The selected contractors not to exceed proposal results in an estimated project cost of two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. The city of Thousand Oaks has budgeted two hundred and fifty thousand dollars towards the project. COSCA staff is recommending an additional appropriation of thirty-five thousand from the, from COSCA's Woolsey Fire Recovery Fund in the allocation dedicated to land management to complete the funding for the project. This fund currently holds three hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars available for appropriation. COSCA's modest contribution will achieve substantial value considering the city's generous matching funds. Uh, trash removal activity, trash removal activities will not involve the removal of mature or scenic trees, the movement of any soil, or result in any ecological damage. As such, the project falls under the CEQA exemption for minor alterations to land, as well as the common sense exception, as it can be seen with certainty that the cleanup activities have no potential for causing significant effect on the environment. Staff therefore recommends that, that the board find this action exempt under uh, the California Environmental Quality Act, uh, Sections one five three zero four and one five zero six one. That's minor alterations to land and common sense exemption respectively. And to approve the contract with Woods Maintenance Services in an amount not to exceed two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars and authorize the COSCA co-chief administrative officer to execute the agreement consistent with Attachment One in your, uh, board package there, um, as approved by the COSCA attorney. And authorize an appropriation of thirty-five thousand dollars from the Woolsey Fire Recovery Fund to complete the funding for the Arroyo Conejo Trash Removal Project Phase Two. And with that, I'm happy to take your questions.
Thank you, Mr. Stark. Questions for staff? Yes. Director Nichols?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Who wanted to speak to? Oh, oh, you'd be, oh, okay, all right. I'm good. Thank you. Uh, just a point of clarification, if I could, Mr. Stark, I noticed there's reference to the, uh, twenty twenty-four RFPQ for an eighty-foot corridor along a two thousand foot long section in the Arroyo. And then I noticed in the scope of work, it's referring to a, uh, zone seventy-five feet in width from each stream bank for four thousand three hundred feet in length. So is this, is this one one hundred and fifty feet wide and, and four thousand three hundred feet long?
Yeah.
And, and where is this in respect to the first phase?
So the first phase of the project used a narrower corridor, and that has much to do with the ge- the geomorphology of the area, that the, the canyon is much narrower there. So the slopes rise up rather quickly, and so the trash washing down the creek occupies a smaller area. As we move down into this air, the, the newer area, it does flatten out and widen quite a bit. So we wanted to make sure we were getting the whole floodplain activated. So that's the explanation for the wider corridor. The length is just a function of the first project being, um, a calibration test of what, what does it take to clean up the creek? Um, so we learned a lot during that process and figured out, you know, how much time does it really take to clean that up? So we were able to calibrate our responses to this RFP based on our experience with Phase One.
And, and secondly, is this all picked, just picked up by hand? I, I would imagine there's got to be some heavier trash. Is that just, uh, it could be, you know, old cars, who knows? Is it just left, or is there heavy machinery involved in any of this?
What we have down there is mo- is basically stuff people are going to pick up with pickers and grabbers. We, this isn't one of those places where you have the cars and the head, and the appliances and the refrigerator and that kind of stuff. You know, the, the bigger items are like pieces of pipe or tires or stuff like that. So it's really not really big stuff. We do have vehicular access for a good portion of the area. So any equipment would really just be a, a truck driving on the road. They'll, the way it worked last time was, yeah, they, they pick it up, bag it up, put it up on the road and haul it out.
Very good. Thank you. Just wanted to get a little mental picture of that. Thank you very much.
Director Engler?
Thank you, Chair Huffer. Yep, um, we, we had some good success down there a few months ago and, uh, picked up a lot of trash. Is the, um, I guess a couple of questions. One, I was down in that area not too long ago with the, uh, our, our, our special populations officers. Um, it's an area that's frequented by some of our unhoused folks. Um, how are we going to approach some of these possessions that they have? Are we going to follow the city's procedures, bag, you know, tag it and that sort of thing? Or how are we going to go about it? And are we going to be using the sheriff to assist us with that?
So COSCA has, uh, a procedures very much modeled off the city's procedures for managing unhoused populations in these, these areas. So we work very closely with the resource officers at TOPD. So COSCA Rangers do make regular visits in advance of the proj- there won't need to be extra work because they're already, the Rangers are there with the resource officers on a weekly basis. So we'll be working on ensuring that we don't have occupied encampments in the cleanup area during the project activities. Um, we actually, when we have an active encampments, that's a, a different contract that we use for the cleaning up of that because that's more of, that could involve hazardous waste. Um, this contract is just for the non-hazardous stuff. Um, as far as possessions, that, that will be part of the process that we have of already um, engaging with the population down there in TOPD. So all the items, the personal items and effects that would be removed from an encampment would be stored at a, at an off-site facility and made available for pickup later.
Okay, and then, um, oh, the original project also had some, uh, invasive species removals. This is strictly trash. We won't be going back and retreating for any of that.
So this, the area that we'll be cleaning is, is also part of the larger invasive species removal project area. Um, that project is really starting to wind down, so we, most of the arundo is, is gone. So we still will probably be going back there for maybe another season or two, um, to play mop up. There won't be any big, large-scale need for any more of that work. In the future, we like to continue some invasive removal projects on palms. It's just a matter of, that's the more costly projects that we're seeking funding for that. But the trash is kind of an end of its own issue on this part.
Sure. No, it's, and there's, I want to say there, we, we made a pretty good dent in the area, I saw, uh, a while back, but, uh, there is still more trash down there, and it's added to by some of our unhoused folks.
There is very much trash still there. So I, I think we'll, you know, we'll, we'll see higher numbers here. Um, but in the area that we did in Phase One, the, the rate of accumulation of new trash is vastly reduced. So as we've been managing the encampment situation in there, um, we, the encampments do get more frequent as we move downstream. Uh, the Phase One area had less encampments, but that kind of made it the easier first place to work while we were still ironing out our procedures for managing encampments.
And, and refresh my memory, because this is somewhat downstream from a lot of our other, uh, feeder streams. Our, what, what's our plan for the trash and everything that's flowing downstream into this area? Are we, are we addressing that upstream as well?
So the city has a, their, their programs through their stormwater permitting process. So they, you know, they put the trash grabbers on the, you know, on the storm drains in, in town. And, you know, I understand they may be doing more of that in, in the future. Um, but yeah, we, we will still continue. We're, we're a large urban paved watershed, and trash is, uh, elusive sometimes, and your best efforts to catch it are not always successful. So, you know, even stuff coming off the freeway up near, like the Oak Mall, for instance, and stuff could blow off of there into the creek. We get it. Um, but I think what we're cleaning up now is, is really like a decade of accumulated material. So this isn't like an annual amount of garbage. This is many years of garbage. So when we get this cleaned up, we think that it'll take a much lighter effort on an annual basis. We could even be working with volunteers in some parts of this to help maintain the area and, and keep it clean. It, you know, when you go down there after it's been cleaned and that, and after we've taken out some of these invasive species and we start seeing the little cottonwood trees and willow trees starting to grow back, and when it's clean, it, it's really quite beautiful.
It, it is. The, uh, the efforts made last, uh, last year or so really improved that area. You know, as you, as you mentioned, the, the trash does seem to come back, but, uh, so we have to revisit. Thank you, thank you, uh, Mr. Chair.
Are there any other questions? Yes, Director Sullivan?
Um, you touched on getting this cleaned up and then volunteers to continue. Phase Two is, does that, is that going to complete the area that you want to do these large? That we want to get the contractor out because there's that type of trash? Or is there another section further down that we may need to look at next year?
So the downstream extent of this project, um, runs just downstream of the Conejo, the Rancho Conejo Playfields Park. And again, we go back to kind of a geology and geomorphology question. The channel bottom there is, is all rock. And rock doesn't grab garbage as well as, as trees and shrubs do. So most of the, of the trash running through that area flows through that area. And the logistics of trying to, you'd have to rappel down into some of these areas to get them clean. So we do have opportunities down in Hill Canyon to intercept, you know, anything that's moving down. Our theory on the upstream area is that most of the trash coming off of the, off, out of the city and into the natural part of the creek from the, the drainage channels will probably spend some part of its lifetime in this area. And if we can interdict it in this area, then we have a better chance of intercepting it before it gets down. Um, we can do some additional cleanups down in Hill Canyon, but the, the trash situation in Hill Canyon, while there's plenty down there, there's nothing like it is up top. So I think for the large-scale stuff, we're looking at committing to this one area for the long haul. the long haul in hopes that we can just, you know, set a new path for garbage. Garbage comes, and then we haul it off before it goes to the ocean. But, you know, the work that we're doing here is also, you know, an important part of the city's, you know, water quality management plan, too. So obviously, they see a lot of value in this, too, and they're allocating substantial funding for this project, and so we're quite grateful.
Any other questions? Just one question, Brian. Is this something of a unique area in terms of trash accumulation, or going forward, other areas that we might be looking at that maybe aren't as bad, but could certainly use some significant trash removal like we're doing here?
COSCA prides ourselves on having our open space be clean. And in most cases, you know, our community helps us with that by not littering and keeping places clean. So this is kind of an acute area, and it's really just because of the function of, well, how does trash move around? Well, water. Water carries trash. So we don't have a whole lot of natural streams left. And the ones we do, you know, this is the one that's on the downstream end of it. We own upstream parts of other kind of riparian habitats. Now, we do have occasional encampment issues on other open space areas, but those are much more episodic, and the Rangers are, you know, can address those, you know, pretty directly. So they don't tend to last as long. The Arroyo is just a harder place to get into and to manage than most of our open space where we could drive a truck up and load everything and move it out. So I'd say this is kind of a unique area, and so that's probably why it's going to be an area of continuing concern. But fortunately, I believe, less effort over time.
Okay. Thank you very much. If there are no further questions, we have three staff recommendations for which I'll entertain a motion. Director Newman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll move Item 6C. Items one, two, and three.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. We have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Director Engler?
Yes.
Director Newman?
Aye.
Director Nichols?
Yes.
Director Sullivan?
Aye.
Chair Huffer?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you very much. Item 6D, adoption of updated COSCA Volunteer Manual.
All right. You get me again. Now, volunteers have long been an important asset to COSCA and are recognized as such in the guiding principles included in COSCA's strategic plan. The COSCA Volunteer Manual is the document by which COSCA recognizes the value of community volunteers and formal volunteer programs, and assists the public in finding ways to contribute volunteer time to COSCA's open space management programs. The first version of the COSCA Volunteer Core Manual was created in June of 2001 as an administrative guide detailing the purpose and structure of COSCA's six initial volunteer programs. In 2009, the manual underwent an update to reflect the addition of two new programs, our Community Outreach and Resource Management, groups, and the evolution of the existing programs since their creation. The updated manual for 2025 has been prepared to better align volunteer management descriptions with COSCA's current oversight capacity to provide additional details of volunteers, to capture some incremental program changes over time, and to introduce a Trail Ambassadors program to add elements found in more, and to add elements found in more modern volunteer manuals that address some liability issues. The Trail Ambassadors Program is a realignment of the former Trail Patrol Program that will activate trained volunteers with expanded knowledge of the open space system and trails that will assist visitors in having a quality outdoor experience while visiting COSCA open space. Trail Ambassadors will also serve as extra eyes on busy open space areas, freeing up Rangers to address other priorities while increasing the visibility of COSCA on open space and trails. Volunteers in outdoor areas have been shown to deter vandalism and other poor behaviors, increase community engagement, provide rapid reporting of issues, and provide a positive role modeling for our visitors. The updated Volunteer Manual also includes the addition of a Volunteer Code of Ethics, a program harassment policy, and updates that include background checks for certain volunteer positions. And these have been modeled off similar policies enacted by the City of Thousand Oaks for their volunteer programs, where we aim to keep our programs as consistent as possible. Updating the Volunteer Manual is the continuation of an administrative activity undertaken by COSCA, which does not fall under the definition of project under California Code of Regulations Title 14, Section 15378B2. So it's not a project under CEQA. COSCA staff recommends the board receive and adopt the updated 2025 COSCA Volunteer Manual and find that the adoption of the manual is not a project as defined under CEQA. With that, I am available for questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Stark. Do we have questions for staff? Director Nichols?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I know from experience, we have a very enthusiastic, engaged, and passionate group of residents and volunteers that love their open space and trails and want to be involved. I've also found when I've gone to Trail Workdays that people from out of the area who just showed up to go hiking decided to grab a rake and started to help. They may or may not have signed up for anything, but they just felt passionate about it and wanting to help. So I appreciate this manual. I read through it. I think it's a good encapsulation of the various programs and the expectations and, I mean, you always think of volunteers as just saying, yeah, I'm going to show up and help, and then I'm going to leave, and it's a very informal process. And I know things are a little different these days. We have to maintain a little level of documentation for that. So with that said, is there, citing my example, someone just happens to show up and wants to help, and I know there's probably some paper forms to fill out. They may or may not do that depending on what type of a workday it was and how they showed up and what friend brought them and things like that. But with that said, is there the intent to maintain like a database of official volunteers? Or is this just, it could be event by event, for example, for Trail Workdays. Obviously, with committees and things, you have full documentation of that. But it could be a one-off type of an event. How is that tracked just to make sure that this process is followed as it was intended?
Well, nobody gets out of volunteering without also volunteering their contact information for future events. We work in partnership with our nonprofit partners at the Caneo Open Space Foundation. They manage a sizable database of historic and new volunteers. So when people register, they can check a box that says, I want to be on the emailing list to get notified of volunteer activities. So when we have volunteer activities going on, we can activate that database to attract volunteers. So we do do that. We know that they're a valuable resource, and, you know, it does make sense to capture what information we can. The volunteer gets to choose whether they want to hear from us again. But, you know, we're gratified that most do. In the last year, we started doing the monthly Trail Workdays to create more frequency of opportunities, and that's been pretty successful. Except when it's 116 degrees, we will give people a day off on that one. Or pouring rain. Last year wasn't great for weather, outdoor volunteering. But we do hope that, you know, when we added Rangers a couple of years ago, one of our primary goals was to open up some additional opportunities for volunteering. So we've been able to do that, and we're now looking forward to the Trail Ambassadors as kind of the next level of expansion.
Well, thank you. And I did hear from one of our residents, I don't know, I think it was a couple of weeks ago at a baseball game or something, was very disappointed that Trail Workday was rained out. He really wanted to be there, just like, for crying out loud, I was counting on this. So I was really looking forward to the next volunteer effort. So I guess that, to me, that just speaks to the passion of our community and our volunteers, and what a valuable resource, and certainly appreciate them. And thank you for preparing this. I think this would be a good asset.
Well, at this point, I'll put a shameless plug out that if people are interested in volunteering with COSCA, they can simply go to the Caneo Open Space Conservation, the Open Space Foundation, Caneo Open Space Foundation. We have a lot of acronyms around here, which is COSF.org, and you can click and sign up to be a volunteer there.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Director Sullivan?
Okay, I have a couple of things. First of all, really, really excited this has finally come to fruition after I know a lot of hard work on the staff's part. Wondering, you know, to piggyback on what Chair Nichols, or Director Nichols said, it seems like the only two volunteer positions that actually have a time requirement are the new Trail Ambassadors, which is a monthly requirement. So it seems like that will be followed up on. And the Adopted Trail, I know there's a COSTAC member that, coordinator that makes sure that we're filling out our quarterly reports. Question about waivers. With every Trail Workday and everything we do, there's always a question, why do I have to sign another waiver? Are we, with this manual, are we at a point where we might be able to sign an annual waiver for those people that volunteer multiple times?
I might defer to my partner to my left to talk about. Joe, would you entertain that question?
So I don't think that's where we're at at this point. We will need a waiver signed and release form for every single event because they're event-specific. So we can look into expanding that to an annual waiver if it lists the actual events, but for now it's event by event.
Okay. Thank you. Also, a question on the, with the, I noticed that in the Trail Ambassador, you know, if you were a mountain biker, it specifically listed a helmet. But in the Trail Watch section indicating what you needed if you were a mountain biker, you have to have your bike in good condition, there wasn't actually a specific mention of helmet. And I only noticed that because of the helmet was mentioned in Trail Ambassador. To me, that was just assumed. Of course, you're going to wear your helmet. But since it is mentioned in the one section for mountain bikers fulfilling that task, I didn't know if that, if it made a difference, if it should be included in the other.
We haven't printed 1,000 of these things, so it's a quick edit.
Okay. And speaking of edits, I did notice it's page 30 of the document. I think it's a typo. Under the Resource Management, there's four bullet points, three or four bullet points, and it says resource, crew leader, blah, blah, blah. And then the fourth one actually says trail crew leader. So I think it might have been a copy and paste thing. So that fourth one probably is meant to say resource manager. It's a slide, I think, 91 in our, in the packet, but it's page 30 of the document.
I'll try and find that.
Need to see that?
So page 30, we're looking under.
The resource manager.
Yeah, trail crew leader.
Because that's.
Yeah, yeah. So if we're under a resource, that would be resource.
Yeah.
Okay.
Lastly, did I say thank you for all the hard work? Because it's so great to have this, and I'm looking forward to seeing what the Trail Ambassador program becomes.
Yeah, we're pretty excited about it.
Thank you. Yes, Director Newman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I'll add my congratulations and delighted to see this manual in place. Following up on a passing comment Director Nichols made regarding, in the past, we've had folks from out of town who have been, if they're willing to pick up a shovel and do good work, we're happy to have them. I didn't see anything here about residency requirements either within city, CRPD, COSCA areas. I don't think there should be such a requirement. I just wanted to confirm that that's the case.
Anybody's welcome. And in fact, we do depend pretty heavily on some out-of-the-area volunteers, you know, for our trail crew leaders, because we work closely with the Santa Monica Mountains Trails Council and Corba as well in terms of taking advantage of their expertise as leaders in trail work. So it's fully anticipated that we would benefit from out-of-the-area support.
Yeah. I mean, if someone shows up and is willing to volunteer, that should be enough. So thank you for confirming that.
I thought of one more thing. Sorry. With the Trail Ambassador program, I noticed that there also is a uniform required, that they need to be out there with COSCA branding. Is that apparel going to be funded by COSAF, our open space foundation partners?
It's a possibility. We have not, you know, done anything formally about it. We don't even exactly know what that uniform would look like yet. But we did want it to be visible because we want the community to know that we and our representatives are on the open space. You know, we care that people are having a quality outdoor experience. And sometimes just having somebody knowledgeable about the trails or, you know, that has the hotline to the Rangers when something's needed, that I think visibility of our agency on the land is important for us and our community.
Absolutely. I know, I think it was actually during the pandemic, a bunch of the Adopted Trail volunteers received t-shirts that said volunteer with the COSCA logo. And the ones that didn't have that were like, how do we get those? You know, the volunteers are so excited about being volunteers. They want to show that. They don't want to be incognito.
So the Caneo Open Space Foundation kind of tracks volunteer hours, and you got to earn your shirt.
Yeah, these days.
These days, yeah.
Any other questions or comments? Just, I'm going to add my thanks. This is a wonderful document. I'm certainly familiar with all the various programs, but the details that were included in the manual here really expanded my knowledge. And I mentioned this to you before, but if and when ever add a new member to the board here or other staff, making sure that they have a copy of this would certainly be very helpful. We're fortunate right now that everybody involved here is very familiar, hikers and bikers and all those. But, you know, I'm very familiar with the programs. But, you know, there may be some other potential members who aren't familiar. It might be helpful for copy of this to be distributed to other city council members and to other park district board members, just so that they're a little more familiar with what COSCA is doing with all the various volunteer organizations.
Well, we'll put this up on our website, and then we're happy to share links to it so everybody could have a look. And if the board at a future date would like to consider a trail work requirement for COSCA board members, we can, we might be able to arrange for that, too.
Is that what I said? Must have been, must have been.
Have to earn your badge, right?
Yeah, right. And just as a suggestion, you're talking about outfits. There's clothing that might stand out. You could, we have volunteer clothing for our soccer program, and they have these bright neon yellow volunteer shirts that you could see from about five miles away. So anyway.
That's it. I'm out. I'm not wearing that thing. Quick question, though, maybe not a quick answer. But the volunteer program scans a lot of people from, you know, very involved volunteers or very casual volunteers. Some of the positions require background checks or live scans and signing harassment documents and things like that. Where do you, where do you make a judgment on, is that for everybody who's a volunteer or casual people? Or how do you make that determination?
So the distinction here is that most of our volunteer activities right now are organized onsite with a COSCA Ranger or COSCA staff present. The positions for which we'll be asking for the additional scrutiny will be for situations when we have a member of the public leading other members of the public. when we have a member of the public leading other members of the public where COSCA staff are not there. And we need to have the confidence that, that those volunteers are, you know, are being held to a higher standard.
Yeah, because we, we have volunteers who are working with the kids and everything on, on trail days and stuff for them. So that's why is it we do that? We make sure we cover that base.
Yeah. I mean, on some of our programs like Trail, Trail Education Days, you know, there's, there's a hundred volunteers that do that, but there's also teachers' parents. And so there's a lot of people. So this was just to pick up those times where, you know, we don't have that higher level of supervision.
Thank you.
Thank you. If there are no further questions, we do have two staff recommendations. I'd like to entertain a motion for those.
Excuse me, Chair?
Yes.
Just because there were a couple of typographic errors, I would propose that number two would be to accept and adopt the 2025 COSCA Volunteer Manual and grant the authority to the COSCA Secretary to correct any non-substantive typographic errors.
Okay. Thank you. Then with, with that clarification, I will entertain a motion.
Regarding item six D, I move that the board adopts the recommendations, one and two, with the additional that Mr. Brick added.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. Motion, a second. Any further questions? If not, take a roll call vote, please.
Director Engler?
Yes.
Director Newman?
Aye.
Director Nichols?
Yes.
Director Sullivan?
Aye.
Chair Huffer?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you very much. Moving on to Agenda Item Seven, Information Items. Seven A Wildlife Safety Programs Update, a verbal report from. Who's doing the verbal report?
That will be me again.
Okay.
Probably heard enough of me already. But it's that wonderful time of year again when weeds are growing taller and people are starting to think about fire safety as we look at fire fuels out in our open space. So I've prepared some information here to update the board and our community about COSCA's efforts in the community to work on fire safety improvements. So I have a slideshow here that I will share. So this will be a summary of COSCA's wildfire safety actions that really started. And we've been doing some of this stuff since the early nineties, but I wanted to talk mostly about the stuff we've done in the last couple of years. Back in twenty twenty, we began working in contract with the Ventura Regional Fire Safe Council to help with community education, to help our, our neighbors understand ways they can help us in our efforts to provide for community safety. And one of the first activities we did was a direct mail campaign. This ran through August through October in twenty twenty. Over that time, we sent about seventeen thousand direct mailers with information about home hardening and other ways that people could help protect their homes from embers during wildfires. On the right of this slide is, is a copy of one of the, the materials that was, that was sent out. And it was mostly about the different zones that people need to look at around their houses to prevent home ignition. Of course, now there's a new zone that was added since then, so we have Zone Zero, but we'll, we'll be working on that now. So we also worked with the Fire Safety Council, the COSCA-funded free home in hardening inspections. And over that initial period, a hundred and eleven home hardening inspections had been conducted at local residences. Following each assessment, the residents received a custom report detailing the strengths and weaknesses of the, of, you know, their home environment with respect to ember resistance, complete with photographs and documentation. So you'll see some of the, in the photo there about, you know, what, what people are doing well and, and some things for folks to work on. We also funded four Community Chipper Days, and these were days where we set up in different parts of town with a big chipper machine. And if people were taking out some vegetation around their, their home for fire safety, they could bring it to the chipping location. This one was, these first were set locations. What we learned along the way was not a lot of people brought very much vegetation to be chipped, although we, we did do some. But now the kind of the program's been more fine tuned and now it's more like mobile where you set the stuff out front and the chipper shows up at your house to do it. We have now been doing a whole lot of that here locally, but the Fire Safety Council has continued to do these. This was part of an earlier funding round for them. So we're not currently funding those, but there, the, there are plenty of state grants and some of the Resource Conservation Districts are also doing this. So that activity is still going on. We're just not doing it ourselves at this point. We did have the Fire Safety Council do a series of public workshops and, and these were pretty well attended, where we did get to do direct outreach with people and, you know, about home hardening and other various things people could do. And I think we learned, we also heard back from people about, you know, their questions about what they had. So I think there's community interest in, you know, how people can help protect their, their homes from igniting. But also, you know, there's a broader interest in emergency planning evacuations and those kind of things. So the messages have been broadened over time. In anticipation that the state government might one day be supplying funding and putting funding into home hardening, we did do a pilot project where we installed home hardening practices at ten homes for low-income seniors. And this was a, a population we were concerned about because when we're talking about home hardening and these things that need to be done around our homes, it, you know, some of that costs money or it's something you could do yourself, but it's kind of hard to do. So we wanted to, you know, help understand how, you know, some populations in our area might need more help and how does that actually happen? So we partnered with, with senior concerns just to help promote it and get the word out. All in all, we had about fifty hours of labor. They screened sixty events at ten homes. They removed about a hundred cubic yards of vegetation, which is a lot. And so we think, we did receive some, some letters from some of the homeowners and they're pure gold in, in reading. They were very appreciative of the work. And I hope at some point that this will be a program that, you know, this may not be a COSCA program running forward, but part of what we're trying to achieve with our contributions was to go out and try a lot of different things and see if we could ground truth, what the possibilities of what could be done in our community. And I think, you know, we ran into some challenges here on this one, just finding contractors that do this work. So now on a current project that we're working on with the Fire Safety Council is to develop the workforce needed to do this work. In this case, you'll see a gentleman here from the crew out of Ojai. So they did much of the screening work. We're trying to find qualified contractors that could do some of the more difficult stuff too, you know, get on people's roofs, sometime replacing, you know, single pane windows with double pane windows. So I think we're still working on developing the, the infrastructure in the community, like the people who could do all the work. Because a lot of work needs to be done. But this was a really, a very rewarding program for us. In our current contract, we're focusing pretty heavily on the development of Firewise USA certified communities. And this is a, a community certification program offered by the National Fire Protection Association. And it involves neighborhoods getting together and, and working on home hardening and fire safety in groups. And we're finding that this is really the best option we have in our communities is when you have multiple homes protected nearby, that kind of takes a critical mass away from, you know, from the power of incoming fires. So in some of our earlier work, we did, I, we identified certain parts of the city that were most vulnerable. That'll be the first to get the ember storms during like Santa Ana wind conditions. So much of this effort has been focused regionally within our area. So we're not necessarily working right here at City Hall, but there's, you know, throughout the, the north and northeast parts of our city focusing there. When we started talking about Firewise with the Fire Safety Council, there was one Firewise community in Thousand Oaks. And today there are now fourteen. So, and we're seeing tremendous growth in this area. There's a lot of interest in it. A lot of this interest, of course, is, is driven by the insurance industry and, you know, concerns with finding insurance. And I think it, you know, we all benefit in our community if we can all have, you know, sane insurance that's affordable that people can use. And so we think this is an opportunity. So we're continuing to, so we're funding the Fire Safety Council to meet with interested neighborhood groups in priority areas. And they will help with the applications and the process and kind of help, help get them going. And, you know, we, we hope that, that these communities that are getting started will, will be long lasting. But it sort of remains to be seen. This is, I think it's the newest thing, but it also seems to be the most promising. And even in just the short term, because a lot of the work these communities are doing is pretty valuable around their homes. And I think we'll see safer communities for it. In another kind of fuels management project, COSCA has initiated invasive species management projects. This one is in Oroo Caneo, and this is the removal of Arundo Donax, the giant reed. This stuff takes over riparian habitats and remove, basically crowds out all the native vegetation. It also contains volatile oils that are quite flammable. This part of Oroo Caneo sits right between two residential communities. So by removing this and clearing this area out, we're removing a lot of source of fuel that, that could potentially link to communities. You'll see on the bottom there, we're also working on the Mexican fan palm removals down through the arroyo. In this first round, we just got all the little ones because getting the big ones out was, had a price tag that was beyond our capacity. We are looking, you know, we've been testing some other more cost-effective methods for removal. So we hope that, you know, we'll be seeking funding for additional work in this area on palms too. And palms are an issue throughout our community too, because we like our palm trees around here. But not all palms are created equal. And this particular species, the, the Mexican fan palm, does ignite fairly easy from egg, from ember ignitions itself. And once it gets going, it rains pretty large embers that fly long distances. So we think there's value in this kind of work too. Plus, you also get a lot of ecological benefits out of it because now we're seeing all the natives come back and, you know, that's what we want down there. We've also been working on a project to ensure that through our open space areas that, that our first responders have good access to the open space if they need to get out there during an emergency. This is, as part of this, we focused on the Lang Ranch open space because it's kind of on our northeast edge and where the fire is most likely to come from during a wind event. This is, we hired an engineering firm to, to analyze eight miles of roads in the Woodridge and Lang Ranch open spaces. And they, they identified all the problem areas and maintenance concerns. So it was really a long-term maintenance plan, but also identified some priority repair projects. On the left on this photo, this is the, the Autumn Ridge Road Trail. The picture on the right that, or left, that, that one, it's a little older. But this gully's been there for twenty-five years. And every couple, bunch of years, it washes out and we go and repair it again. So as opposed to being on the treadmill of repair, we worked with some grant funds granted to us through the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy to finally just fix this thing. Now the water gets collected at the top and it gets piped to the bottom. The slope has been stabilized and seeded. And now we're just waiting for the plants to grow back over so you don't have to look at that ugly pipe. And the most current and widespread project that we, we do now is that we, COSCA partners with the City of Thousand Oaks and the Caneo Recreation and Park District to provide uniform fuels management throughout the Caneo Valley. So any place where the one hundred foot defensible space zone extends beyond private property and onto COSCA City or CRPD property, our agency works in a common contract to get that done. Each year, our, our partnership works on fuels management on about three hundred and eighty acres. And they are out there, not as we speak now because it's evening, but they are out there every day right now, working on this. And of course, you can see that some of this is still pretty green. So the, the rain last week didn't really help with our weed abatement stuff. So it's likely some of our areas will need second cuts, but that's not really uncommon for us here. So, yeah, our goal here is just to ensure that everybody has their one hundred feet of dispense, uh, defensible space. And we also take this responsibility seriously because it's, it's a year-round activity also. Yes, there's a June first deadline to have your, you know, hazardous fuels managed. And we strive to hit that every year. It's, it's hard with the size, you know, the magnitude of this project. But COSCA does continue working on these areas until they're compliant and they stay compliant. It's important for people to know that this is a year-round responsibility. It's not a one and done thing. We've, we achieved good economy with our current contractor and we think they're doing great work out there. Just have a couple of pictures here that shows kind of what it's about. Almost looks like a farm. And with that, I'm happy to take any of your questions on wildfire safety programs.
Well, thank you very much for the detailed update, Mr. Stark. Any questions for Mr. Stark on this item? Yes, Director Nichols?
Yes, thank you. First, as I just was noticing with this nice growth in farm of, uh, growth of vegetation up here. I know we have contractors, you were explaining, that does work on behalf of COSCA, the city and the park district. I'm just curious, what is the Ranger's role in that? Obviously, they'd be supervising it. And maybe Patrick can help us with this later in his time. But do they actually have to get out there with weed whips and do some of that work too? Or is this, is everything taken care of by contract?
Well, the actual work is undertaken by contractors. But each of the agencies has a representative in terms of ensuring that the, their areas of responsibility are taken care of. So, you know, for us, we have, you know, Ranger Carrie is on it, you know? But then she's also a CRPD employee, so she does double duty. And then we have the Landscape Department at the city will oversee those areas. So there's oversight that, you know, we're going and following up and checking on the areas. And if we get calls from, you know, we'll get calls from our neighbors, you know, we can distribute that to our project manager. And then they can have a look and they'll be kind of like the bridge to the contractor. So I'm not calling the contractor myself. This is done kind of at, on the field level. In some cases, on some late follow-up, if the contractor's already out of the area and it's something easy, Rangers are more than capable of doing this work. It's just, if they had to do this, then none of our trails would be brushed. And so our, our Rangers spend most of their time actually whacking the stuff, you know, to make our trails accessible.
Okay. And, and then this is a follow-up. You were making reference to the requirement for a hundred feet of hazard abatement, which you maintain on COSCA property or homeowners have to maintain on their property if that's the case. In a recent conversation with the Ventura County Fire Department staff, they were indicating that, that is in fact their requirement a hundred feet for ordinance. And when they get, it was their statement that when they get calls from homeowners or others asking if that could be extended, that it's, he was saying that it's a fire department policy that the homeowners must do their home hardening first before the fire department will consider allowing. before the fire department will consider allowing to extend the brush clearance. I was wondering if that's, uh, if that's similar to what you were aware of.
That hasn't, that hasn't come up for us. The, you know, COSCA's policy is to provide a uniform service on our perimeter for all of our direct neighbors. So we, everybody gets the same 100 feet. And the fire department has not recommended expanding the, the defensible space zone only because, you know, removing vegetation beyond that doesn't contribute to additional home safety. You know, that defensible space is really there for, A, for firefighters to work and to keep gradient heat and direct flames from igniting a home. Of course, most homes do ignite from embers and, uh, embers go over six lanes of freeway. So, you know, you can remove a lot of vegetation and not have any result for it. So our policy is to try and keep our ecology intact to the extent possible and make, um, you know, establish a good balance between the protection of natural resources and our community.
Good. Thank, thank you for clearing that up. Pun intended.
Any other, any other questions? Yes, Director Newman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And thanks very much for this update on outreach, education on, on clearance efforts. Much appreciated. Looking forward, uh, I wonder if there's been any thought toward, uh, working on a regional basis, working, I guess you're working already with county fire to some extent. But, but it's great to hear that we've gone from one Fire Safe Council to 14.
Yeah, the Firewise community.
Firewise, I'm sorry. Yeah, to get, to go, um, to get that number up. I understand there's a countywide group that, that helps facilitate these.
So that's the Ventura County, the Ventura Regional Fire Safe Council. So they're, they're an independent nonprofit and they do serve the whole county. So they've, they've got a, a wide service area. Uh, but they do, they've provided good educational resources and they've been a valued partner for, with COSCA for a bunch of years now.
Correct, yeah. And, um, finally, um, I'm sure you've seen SMMC received $31 million of Prop 4 funding and this week awarded a $1 million grant to Ventura County Fire Department. Um, I'm, to spend their money for them. I'm, I'm hoping some of that is, is used in these kind of abatement programs, that there can be some regional effort to continue and, and expand this sort of thing.
It's, well, I mean, in our area, we pretty much have the area covered. So I'm not sure that they'll say like, since we're already paying for it, they'll, they'll want to bail us out. But, um, you know, there's certainly things that could be done with the grant funds locally. And, you know, COSCA will also, um, you know, be in discussions with the Conservancy over potential grant opportunities to, to forward some of our work as well.
Excellent. Thank you.
Any other questions? Just one quick question. You mentioned that we've expanded the, and I'm going to make the same mistake, the Firewise communities. Expanded to 14, just out of curiosity, how large are these communities? I mean, is it two or three homes or 20 or 30 homes or?
So the minimum number to, to get your certification is eight homes? And the maximum is 2,500. Our average will be smaller in maybe the 20 to 30. You know, in, in a community, they're, they may not all be contiguous, but they need to be kind of close. But that's about the average sizes I think they are is 20 to 30 homes or maybe more in some.
Okay. Just curious. Thank you.
From my, from my perspective, having, since my neighborhood is one of the 14, it's, uh, our neighbor is 83 homes. That is, uh, which is, you know, smaller, smaller on the size of a neighborhood. We do have one that is a condominium complex at the Freeway and Lynn Road, more or less. That's several hundred residences. So they're, they, they vary in size and, and, uh, you know, shape and everything. All of them have the, are exposed to open space right now. That there's a motivation, as Mr. Stark mentioned earlier, for, uh, mitigating some of the impacts of insurance. But the, um, it, uh, it allows people in neighborhoods to band together and take control of some of the risk that, uh, uh, living next to open space affords. So it puts in the hands of folks the ability to really mitigate some of those risks. I would encourage everybody to look into Fire Safe Councils and, uh, become a Fire Safe community. But the, um, uh, I think from our, our perspective, and I appreciate what, um, Director Newman's mentioning, is that there is, uh, recently money freed up by our supervisor. And I'm hoping that much of that can be used to better educate folks in our community as to the, um, benefits of a Fire Safe community and being abandoned together to not only protect your home, but your neighbor's home and also appreciate our open space.
Thank you. Appreciate the additional information, Director Engler. Okay, no further questions on 7A. We have now formally received the verbal report. 7B, COSCA volunteer core activities.
Thank you, Chair Huffer. That's just a receive and, and file.
All right.
So for you folks to read and, uh, no verbal on that.
Okay. Thank you very much. Item 7C, oh, his first opportunity, I believe.
Yeah, we'll do a little musical chairs here.
All right. Whoops, I don't have to lean in too far. So Jim, thank you for the introduction earlier. I do appreciate the sold-out crowd for my first presentation tonight. Um, so first, um, I just want to thank, uh, or say how much I appreciate the opportunity that CRPD gave me to fill the park superintendent position. So thank you, Jim. Thank you, Andrew Mooney. Um, second, uh, just want to say I'm very excited to get to know more about open space and COSCA and the partners we work with. Since I've been in the parks, uh, for the last 10 years. So it's going to be, it's going to be fun learning a lot more about what we do here. So thank you for having me tonight and I look forward to many years of collaboration. So I'll start my presentation. I do want to give supervisor, uh, Ranger Supervisor Corey credit for helping me out with this because they're the ones out there on the front lines doing this work. So they're providing me a lot of, lot of pictures of stuff I don't see. So, um, so since the last board meeting, uh, we've had moderate rain this year. I just thought this would be a good picture of Lake Eleanor and the geese enjoying some of that early rain. So, uh, when the rain comes, uh, our drainage action management plan is going full speed. Each ranger is assigned several, uh, several sets of V ditches, culverts and drains to clear. On the right, uh, this was a problem spot in the Wildwood area up in Big Sky. The drain looked clear, but it kept flooding. So the rangers got in there and they found a pretty sizable boulder down there that was the culprit. So, uh, with rain, uh, we also come across issues such as, um, flooding and washouts. And so we got rangers out there with trail equipment, uh, fixing ruts, reshaping, uh, damaged areas and, and fixing the trails. Uh, also with, uh, with moisture in the soil, it's easier to, uh, for, for people to build jumps and move the dirt around. So, um, the rangers, uh, where am I? So the rangers are out there educating, enforcing and closing down off-roading, illegal trails, clubhouses and bike jumps that pop up when the moisture's in the soil. Uh, on, as, as Brian talked about on some positive notes, we were able to close the Arroyo for some cleanups. Uh, this is the, some of the, some of the stuff Brian was talking about. We're cleaning up, um, camps, kitchens. Corey pointed out, there's some, uh, some traps out there you could step in. And I guess one of the rangers did accidentally step into it. He wasn't, wasn't hurt, but, uh, some booby traps out there to be, be aware of. Uh, we also had some volunteer events. We had the, uh, the Rotary Club cleanup about a month or so ago, where they, they cleaned up quite a bit. We had the Amgen cleanup, Earth Day Wishbone Trail cleanup with Westlake as well as the Canejo Canyons cleanup. And Jim's taking the picture there. Uh, this was Trail Education Days, uh, which I, uh, was glad to attend for the first time this year. It was pretty exciting to see, uh, how it works and, and what everybody offers. You got the Rangers in action sharing tools they use daily to maintain the open space and the trails. On the right, that was, uh, the Special Friday Group at Whole Access Trail for students with social, uh, with special needs and, uh, mobility deficiencies. And then something the rangers don't normally report to, but there was, uh, a stray dog reported and they came out and, and rescued it. They, uh, they found, they, they tried to look for the owners. In the meantime, they did find a temporary, uh, adoption for, for the dog, which is a pretty cute dog. So I thought it'd be a good picture. So some, some, just more positive stuff the rangers are doing on a daily basis to, to help the community. And then, uh, I know Matt always showed sunsets, uh, but I, I, I took this because I live up in Wood Ranch and all you see is mustard and it's absolutely beautiful. It's, it's not just patches, it's the whole mountainside. And also just to show, you know, what the rangers are doing out there for us on the trails and, uh, you know, making sure everybody's, uh, continues to have access and, and enjoy the open space. So, thank you.
Patrick, thank you very much and, and welcome. Questions for Patrick? No? All right. Well, job well done. We look forward to your periodic reports, so.
Thank you.
Okay, so item eight, COSCA updates. Mr. Field, was there anything that you had to add?
Uh, I did actually want to just, a quick reference, mostly because, uh, well, director, former director now passed away, Ed Jones, council member, CRPD board member and I think 10-year or eight-year COSCA board member. So he had been on COSCA for a long time. Just we, we, Canejo Rec and Park District had our annual gratitude circle ceremony. And the board recognized, uh, Ed Jones and George Lang at that. So I thought it'd be nice to mention that. That was kind of a nice event last Monday, I believe, two Mondays ago. And I'm mentioning this only because some people have been confused and been calling us or concerned about what we were doing involving a trail run. I think it just hit the, the newspaper, uh, the Boney Mountain Trail Run. If you'd seen that in the newspaper and it referenced it was in, in Thousand Oaks in the trails. And, um, it, it was definitely in our area, but it was not on city or COSCA or CRPD property. So it was, um, it was a, it was a trail run that literally was going up Boney Mountain, which is, which is not in our jurisdiction. So, um, yeah, unfortunately a, a young man passed away on a really hot day on that run. So, um, just wanted to let, let folks know that, that, that that did happen near Thousand Oaks, but not inside Thousand Oaks.
Jim, was that, it wasn't an organized run or was that a, um, spontaneous one?
Well, from the newspaper reporting, um, it referenced an organized run and it did have a website for it and everything. So I'm, I'm just going off kind of the news pieces I've put together with the newspaper, not like official, you know, public safety. But this just, I found, you know, got this, this afternoon. So it looked like it was an or, you know, an organized run that, that involved a, a climb up 2,700 feet up Boney probably a 100-degree day. So, yeah.
Thank you very much. Any questions? No? Okay. Well, we'll go to item nine, board member comments. And I'll start on my far left of Director Engler. Any comments?
Just a quick question and kind of a follow-up. Earlier, late last year, we talked about, uh, types of, um, powered bicycles that are allowed on the trail. I'm no, just as I go about town, I'm noticing more and more on the streets, for lack of a better term, these are the, the electric motorcycles that are, are seen on the streets. I know they're not allowed on our trails, but have we seen a, an increase of usage on our trails of these? I won't say unlawful because they can be driven, but ones that are not allowed on our trails.
Uh, we do continue to have them. You know, the increase, I'm not aware that it's so much more. I do see them more around town, I think, on the streets. I'm, you know, technically they're not legal on the streets either. You know, and so, uh, Thousand Oaks Police do interdict on those sometimes. And rangers have made contact. Generally when we're able to intercept them, you know, they'll just be detained until a parent comes because they're generally all minors.
Have we done any outreach? I know we did some outreach last time to try to educate the public, ask what's allowed on our trails and what isn't.
Yeah, we have, it's, you know, but we'll have to keep doing it. But TOPD is on board too, so we'll, we can connect, you know, reconnect with them too and continue that messaging.
Thank you. Director Nichols?
Just thank you to the board for rescheduling for us. And so we will be out of town next week at a conference. But thank you for adjusting your schedules. I know you have lots of things to talk about besides just open space, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Oh, I'm sorry, Director Sullivan.
Um, thank you. Because this is a special meeting, I know we were only allowed public comments on agenda items. And we did, as superintendent, uh, park superintendent alluded to, we had Trails Education Days since our last meeting. If this were, uh, not a special meeting, we would have had a member from COSAF. Elaine Hagan would have been here to present. I did get some stats from her. We had 1,070 fourth graders come through Trails Education this day, this week, year, four days. All the CBUSD elementary schools, uh, were in attendance. The NPS and MRCA Rangers joined our COSCA Rangers. So we saw those slides. There is the annual writing contest for it. And it was about the same participation, around 70% of the fourth graders did submit something. Those were actually judged yesterday by, um, some retired teachers as a formal committee for that. The winners have been chosen and, um, because of how our meeting falls, we won't be involved in the presentation. But at the next CRPD board meeting on June 5th, the five winners will be presented with their awards and a little prize package. So it's, um, it's a big deal. And I just didn't want Trails Education Days to go unnoticed by the COSCA board because there are a lot of volunteers and volunteers that are out there all four days. And side note, back to the equestrian comment. We have struggled in the past with getting equestrians to participate in the Safety and Courtesy skit. We managed to have a horse each of the four days. And I feel like we're gaining traction with the equestrian community. and I feel like we're gaining traction with the equestrian community and getting them on board to volunteer and making them more aware. And now we've already set the dates for Trails Education Days next year, April 20th through the 23rd. And we're getting commitments from our equestrians as well as our other volunteers. So, and Patrick, it was great to see you out there. That's where we originally met. So, thank you, Director.
Thank you very much. And I do appreciate you bringing up Trail Education Days. We're looking forward to our meeting in, in June because it's always, it's, it's a treat to, to hear from those kids. So, um, sorry, Director Newman.
Thank you, Chair. I'm delighted to hear about the great turnout. All 17 elementary schools. It's fantastic. Uh, just to follow up on something Director Engler brought up before, on these motorcycles, unlicensed motorcycles by another name. Um, I've had two dealings with TOPD, uh, recently in response to residents' complaints about this. Um, one was from, uh, Jack Nosco, who is a friend of this agency, who identified for the police a couple of places where juveniles were, were congregating on these. Um, both, both sites resulted, uh, resulted rather in confiscations of the bikes. And, and also separately, I'd spoken with different members of the motor pool who's, who say that yes, this, this does continue to be a problem on city streets. And the trailheads are not on, they're not out in open space, but it is a known issue. They are continuing to, to see it and act on it where they can.
Yeah, that's, it's a little scary seeing, seeing those kids out there. And, you know, maybe they have helmets, maybe they don't, popping wheelies and in and out of traffic. And it's, yeah.
One of the, one of the key differences between quote-unquote regular e-bikes, which are classified, class one through four, and these things, is that those are speed governed. There's two classes that are governed at 20 miles per hour. There's two more classes that are capped at 28 miles per hour. These things can go 50, 60, 70 miles per hour.
Yeah. Good. Uh, just briefly, um, Jim stole part of my thunder. I was going to talk about the gratitude circle, but it was nice to have two individuals who have been involved, involved with open space, um, Ed Jones and, and George Lang, uh, recognized at the event. And then several weeks ago, maybe three or four weeks ago, uh, it was nice to see some representation out at the Arbor Earth Day over at, uh, Thousand Oaks Community Park. You know, uh, Brian was there and several other folks were there. Foundation was represented, COSCA was represented. So, um, it was a nice event and it was good to, good to see, uh, some of our folks out there. So that's all I have. There are no other comments from the board members. We're going to item 10 to adjourn to regular meeting of September 17th, 2025.